I just put them together and he called me back and I was like, did you really go five five seven? She was like, no. That's what this piece of paper says.
Um, that obviously is not our.
I usually have that up on.
Yeah, it says Al Glover.
I don't see where you see that.
And then I'm a left corner.
Oh. So somehow I forgot to set that's part of the team, so it's a. A lot of them they have.
Um, yeah. Yeah, so we actually have a true. And then we have those tools.
It's weird because it's so.
The true tip, it cleans, cleans it all up. As well as lawyers. Yep, and so I actually do that. If, if I've got the weather window actually to, my swatter tends to fall aside. It comes out of the form and shields. And so ours is a three row, it looks like other rows. Yeah.
I thought the same thing.
Yeah, it'll be.
Well, can you hear us out so they can?
Yeah, it unfolds and they're all just.
There's a green swat.
I've got it just aware.
And I said this to.
Just almost about.
Uh, seven oh one, we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, we'll start with.
A pleasure to be student of the United States of America. Into the Republic which stands. A nation under this law with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, we begin with the presentation. The new body president on the.
Well, here, no, but Sky is here to replace the new vice president. He's next year president.
Oh, president-elect.
You can stand in front of them and you can share all the great things going on right now.
So, uh, Marla's gone, the seniors are gone on the state, uh, the senior trip. And then they're coming back tomorrow, I believe. And then state check leaves tomorrow morning at AM. And then it'll compete Thursday and Friday. And then we return back early Saturday morning to attend graduation. And then, then here, Monday, return all our stuff. And then Tuesday is launch families. So, yeah. That's, I think, going on.
I don't. I don't. Let's see, I guess, I jumped two hundred.
One hundred and four five one.
One hundred, one hundred, two hundred and four five one. I shot.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck. All right, well, thank you.
So, and there is new business?
Yes.
It will be a scene. Uh, it's a letter from Chris Crone and, uh, OSBA that they would like for support on. We're in a sport. Up in danger, mostly due to some funding issue that might fix into it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move on with facilities. Al, how are you? Gone. Oh, there you are. I think you're muted, Al.
Eric, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Well, we're chugging light around their facilities, uh, mowing, trimming, watering, usual stuff this time of year. Getting ready for graduation. We'll be setting up the gym, getting that taken care of. Usual stuff, um, and then we're gonna start moving classrooms here pretty quick for our, our project that's coming up here in a couple of weeks. And, uh, getting those rooms emptied out and getting them ready for whatever little demo they have to do and then for them to start working on the seismic refit. So, not a whole lot of new stuff in, in facilities, but we're just plugging along, getting ready for summer.
All right, well, thank you, Al. Everything looks great. You dream and, yeah, the ground looked really presentable. So, thank you guys for everything. Uh, moving on to, uh, uh, seismic project.
So, we did a pre-bid walkthrough here about a week and a half ago. Um, had several entities show up. One of the things that has thrown us minor attention of the project, I say minor only because of the unknown. Um, we had to have a house and hat inspection done of that building, even though most of the asbestos tile pipe, et cetera, is no longer there. Unfortunately, when you have a building built from the sixties, it, uh, has drywall and texture on it that is asbestos conveying. And so over the years, as long as it's been painted and sealed, it was fine. For the seismic project, they actually have to get an abatement crew to come in. And they will have to go through an abatement process on all the walls that they're going to shear up. Uh, might be some asbestos in the ceilings and then, uh, the roof has some left paint in it, but most roofers are certified to know that. So, getting bids this, this week, um, it's all part of the grand field. But it's, uh, the unknown that we're getting the bids on and hopefully they'll be ready to start on the ninth. No matter what happens, the contractors will start covering the roof because they're actually gonna do it from the top down instead of the bottom up. Um, because they gotta put blocking and sheer walls. They, they go through and actually sheet walls, make sure walls. The other big thing that came up was there has to be a seismic expansion joint, um, which means the wall between the elementary that we built that's new and the wall that's part of the old elementary that butt right up against each other have to have an eight foot or eight inch space in between them with expansion joint material inside of that. So, they're gonna have to tear out the old wall on the end where those double blue doors are. The entire wall from the classroom side to the staff room side and replace that and move it eight inches in. And so that'll be a big project too. But the estimated time for them to do the final right now, it's still September eighth or ninth. And we'll talk about that more with the calendar. That's the big thing. This, this week, right now, bids are coming in. They put everything out to bid and they're making decisions on who the subcontractors are. And so, and then next week, we'll meet, I think we're meeting Monday, um, for the owner architect and contractor meeting again. So, we can get updated on where they are with bids and who putting bids, who can accept it for bids, get background checks down on the subcontractors and hopefully be ready to move forward by the next Monday.
All right. So, okay, so where, where? So, taking proposals for the contractors that hired, right?
Yeah, we hired our CMGC. Now, they're hiring the subcontractors that will work with them. And so, which is all part of the grant. Uh, and so they go through, so once we, once we contract them, they contract their subcontractors because there's parts of it they'll self-perform themselves to. And do those, but the one thing that they cannot self-perform is the asbestos statement.
And the funding on this grant works out? When do, do we have the money in our possession or how does the?
It's a reimbursement process. And so, we've been, we have been granted the one point nine million dollars. And what they do is they will submit to us a, I forget what they call it, iron sculptors, a bill that they've got a special word for it. But they'll submit that to us, it gets paid, we turn in and get it reimbursed. It's just a flow through.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with Al's grants. Where, do you know, so when I've done these contracts for the county and different government, we include provision that I would make it expressly condition that their payment is directly tied to this grant, not anything beyond the district site.
And that, that is.
You know, we have that in the, in the contract is what I always, I mean, when we hire the contractor, it's the school district is hiring them to do this job and, and if they have cost overruns or whatever it is and something more expensive, um, the concern is that we, we're gonna have to pay out of pocket for that grant, so.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that contract has expressed in it that we are not going to be liable to you for anything more than what our grant, so that for, uh, um, community development block grants, uh, if they were the same basically, it's a lot of ways, but I was. I mean, to protect our liability to make sure that to let the contractor know you are only gonna get paid as much as the grant funding.
And we do have that, and there's the other part that we have in there is we have a large contingency, so when it went out to bid, it goes out to bid for everything but the money in the contingency. And before we put it out to bid, once we found out, we had to have the asbestos removal. They put in a contingency within that for that as well. And so unless we have tons of change orders, which I don't see that happening, then there shouldn't be excess costs. The only unknown, but that's why you have the contingency. When we did the seismic rehab on the gym days and these guys for the same company that did it, um, when they started tearing into one of the walls, because you can't see inside the walls, they're not hard. The north side bottom seal plate was wrong. Well, bottom seal plate's under everything, so they literally had, fortunately, they had to jack up, put a new seal plate in. That was something not covered necessarily in the grant because it was completely not anticipated, except for the contingency area. And so, we've been pretty conscientious about carrying a fairly large contingency.
Yeah.
With some, uh, addendums that we can do if we get to that point and we have money left over.
Yeah, and I, I mean, super concerned, I could have been through the same company, it's the same company that.
This building, yeah, it's McDonald's McCormick, they've done, especially the third project they've done, of course, third big project.
And we'll keep a lid on the seismic grant. We've been running over every, if you don't know what you don't know, right? So, I'm sure Lance will be good, nice.
Oh, I know. I mean, I'll make a job on it. And starting probably not this year, but following, I'll start inviting Colby and Louderstil from the 77, I think those were the 71 to be involved as well.
Yeah.
So, they can sit in on those owner operator contractor, owner, owner, architect, contractor meetings. But that's really we go through where we have the process, what's going on this week, is there anything unexpected that came up? Um, do you want this kind of lighter? Do you want this kind of light when we reinstall them? Those conversations happen at that point. And so, I have no problem because there, it's pretty transparent. We did this last school round too. They're really good about, we don't do any changes at all that we have to be in approval.
Well, that too, yeah, this is the. Or? Education projects since.
Yeah, the only, other than the, it's the only thing that, this is that. They're preparing, so that's, that's great work.
Well. Anyway, sorry, no, no, that's, that's a good point. McCormick and their. Came up unexpectedly, they would have meetings right away with, with everybody. I mean, they had contingency first, it's very early. But, I think it's pretty, and, and Joe was willing to come meet with me at the beginning. He's gonna be here this fourth meeting once he wants to be in trouble with his newly married wife.
I know, that first year and first year's not.
Year seven. No, that's great. So, thank you. Uh, all right, moving, does any, any more questions on the seismic?
No, sorry.
Nope, no, you're good. Uh, okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from asking? Sorry, everything looked up all right? Thank you, I just hope on the main. Huh? Oh, no, I thought we were moving on. No, uh, everybody good with this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, no problem. All right, we'll move on with finances.
Okay, I do just have the checkers here in front of you, um, so I'll kind of give you a recap on where we're kind of standing with the financials of the district. Uh, things are coming in pretty true to what we budgeted and what we're seeing. We're still trying to, uh, realign staff to where they currently are and then quarters, some existing grant money to true out those, um, special revenue funds. But things are looking good. Uh, we did have a, uh, larger payment come into the district for the May adjustment on this month. It's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That was due to some transportation. We kind of talked about that in the budget committee meeting. Uh, we have some transportation bills that were pushed into the, uh, the full years, we had like sixteen months of transportation instead of just the regular twelve. Um, but we did see the reimbursement on that come back this last year, which is great. Uh, I've mapped some larger checks that have gone out. Our, uh, early literacy grant, employee education, so that's a yearly subscription for dibbles. And then Spanish for some students. That's an early lit grant. Uh, Molly got an O F loan this grant and has been paying some extracurricular things out of that, so eleven hundred dollars to Berthoff Glass for glass funding. Uh, Blue Mountain Community College paid dual credit tuition. We also have the Berkle grant and we did some playground, uh, nine square. Side. We did cut wrap beef, which is always great to have. We do pay for that outside. Small expenditures there. Uh, we do have our community bank loan, that monthly loan payments for the elementary school that we keep paying on. Getting some larger expenditure is home school transportation with next month. See, that's slowing down here in the next month, then we'll have some summer school transportation that will be reimbursable for that summer school grant. We finally got the, uh, basketball officials final bill for basketball, so they trued up their cost there, two thousand dollars. Uh, we pay PBS, environmental and engineering, and they do the asbestos, um, for their module renewal, so some licensing renewal. And that is all I have for you.
All right. Will you like it?
Excellent.
Thank you, Amanda, very much for.
Yes.
Thank you for everything you do and have a safe trip, Beth.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, moving on, I have a couple of letters of resignation. Uh, Dear Mr. Dixon and Mrs. Smith, I am ready to formally resign from my position of fourth grade teacher at the end of the current school year. Please know I am very grateful to have, have the opportunity to be part of North Powder Charter School, Randy Richardson. Dear Mr. Dixon and Mrs. Smith, I'm ready to formally resign from my position with North Powder Charter School at the end of this current school year. I thank God I haven't had this opportunity to teach the students of Powder Valley and grow as an educator. Sincerely, Matthew Richardson. The best in the future. And with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, sorry, second. It's been moved by Drew Martin, seconded by Justin Megan. To approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor said aye. Aye. All those opposed, same thing. Passes unanimously. Moving on to the whole business with the hiring updates.
So, as we talked about last board meeting, um, Mr. Hodges is presenting some different attributes of life. And so, we hired a new special education teacher. Her name is Rhonda Coltrane. She is from the Lebanon area as far as where she lives. Uh, she's worked for Salem Carter's there at their middle school, has been involved in schools one way or another for years. She was a bus driver and then she was a security, security guard for the school that she teaches in currently, uh, for six years. And, uh, really since she found her passion for education through that security job position, being around the kids all the time. Um, seemed very energetic, very excited. And it was really interesting to me, the night that we interviewed her, we had to do a Zoom interview. She was Zooming with us from her car while her child was laying there, their animal in a bear. Uh, she has a husband that is working in Baker. He works for the Natural Resources and Conservation Unit out of Baker. Um, he moved over here a year ago and they talked about if, after a year, if he enjoyed it, then the whole family would live this way. And so, they decided that they're selling their place over there, looking for a place over here and she'll be here on the second.
Husband's been here.
For a year. Yep, yep, he lives in Baker somewhere around the campus and works for the natural resources and conservation. Then we hired a, just recently hired a new fourth grade teacher named Ashton Bales. Um, some of you may recognize Ashton if you go to any of Eastern volleyball games because she did play for their national teams. Um, she was a player of the year or player of the month just recently for Eastern. A new player of the year for volleyball. Um, uh, Mary Nicole Bales. And so, there's some relations there that the Bales family. Um, but she is very energetic, very team oriented, uh, seemed to have a real passion for kids and got nothing but great recommendations when we kept her around. Uh, she did her student teaching in Union and then sub for the last year. And so, I think she will be a definite asset to the team.
That's, that's great. Well, thank you, Lance. Uh, moving on to strategic planning.
So, I'm not, I'm not gonna read this whole thing. You guys can read this at your leisure if you haven't read it already because what it really goes through is the, kind of the executive summary history of our charter school program. But one of the things that's come up and we talked about a little, then I, I did some explaining in there is we surveyed students this year at the high school level, um, eighth graders on up. And it became very apparent that things like engineering were high priority. Uh, CTE and technology, so for CTE and technology was a high priority. And so, what it really got me to thinking about is in two thousand, and actually it was in two thousand nine, when we became a charter school. In two thousand ten, we did our first attempt at the charter school grant, which is where you have to put your entire plan proposal. Um, your outcomes, your goals, your areas of strategic planning, um, that's where we came up. Sciences, the engineering, and, uh, it was quite a process. And then over time, as people have changed and stuff, we've kind of moved away and I would say people change, coordinators have changed, staff members have changed. Some of the original purposes aren't necessarily remembered. And one of the things I really think, and that's why the, probably the most important part is I said the board has some decisions to make. Um, so on that second page in blue, it says, does the board want to have work sessions involving slightly community members and staff to re-envision the future charter polls and vision? Does the board want to a chart point, a charter advisory committee can work with the board to re-envision the future charter provision? And what will the future of North Powder be for students and families? The real issue that I've come up with guys is that was a very detailed lengthy process and not something I think is meant to be part of a regular board meeting. It will assume your board meetings. And so, but I think it is time to revisit that. It's been fifteen years since we wrote the charter grant. And we've kind of lost engineering. We're trying to get that back. We're working on some different strategies. Um, medical sciences, we've been trying to keep alive through a polyomie and this year we did have some kids take polyomie. Um, but the one that really hit me is CTE and technology scored really high, so it's what else are we gonna do with those programs? I think that if you read the original executive summary, we talked about creating CTE programs that had more advanced math built right into them, which is kind of how we got the construction geometry. But one of the things we talked about this year is, it's a, uh, Ag Math ninety-eight, I agriculture and math together. And so, is there some fun ways for that to work in the future? But it needs to be the direction and the vision of the board and the way the board wants to see the district go with the involvement from community and, and when we started, um, I don't know how many of you remember, because I know your mother was on it. Um, we had a charter board because it was required. And then you have the school board. And so, the charter board did a lot of the work to get this, as well that Mr. Dixon ideas is the charter board's idea. Uh, they did a lot of work with some community members involved too, to come up with these goals and visions and they presented them to the school board. And then the school board approved those things that they thought fit with what they want to see done. Um, I don't want that to get lost. And as several people change, there will be transition coming in the future. There's only a few of us that have the knowledge of where they started at, so I think before that knowledge is lost, it's time to go back and re-envision that so that you have a pathway for the future of our companies as you're looking forward. This ties right in. This would be part of the project that, like we were talking about. Yeah, with strategic planning, there's, there's one. Yeah, with strategic planning, there's, there's one side of, you know, what kind of things do you want to see and what kind of things do we want to build for the future for the person you hire? Then there's really what is the foundation of what our district is? And, you know, there's, there's things you're going to have, we have state requirements. But when we became a charter school, there was definitely a focus on what are we going to do above and beyond that? What is going to make us special and make us a charter school? And these were the areas we chose. Um, I think if you're going to bring some of those back, then there's got to be some conscious decisions when you do hiring, when you do scheduling, those kind of things. But it really starts with, these are the board's goals, just like we did with our grade reading map a few years ago. These are the board's goals. This is what the district vision is for the future. Then it works downhill. So that's why I go back to, you want to have board work sessions and you can create people to be a part of that. Or do you want to have a committee that's going to be part of that with major support members on it? And that committee will report back to the board.
Well, thank you. Would you guys? I mean. I, I think it would be. Okay with me, if we discussed as a board, if the two of us might be. You know, good to know on there, not necessarily a separate committee to report back. Or if we wanted to, I mean, I don't want to take everybody's. Time throughout the process. But if we had some features we wanted to maybe talk about, see and. Um, working with you as far as, you know, scheduling, you could talk about scheduling issues or frustrations they've had with trying to maybe multitask with the math teacher doing.
I do.
Engineering. I would know that or differently, like that. I mean, I, I would want to know that information, so I'm not giving out ideas that have a preemptive, that's a scheduling nightmare. I want people's input on that. Um. You know, as far as community members go, I, I personally don't have a strong connection with or know of a lot of community members that have. Approached me any ways that they have concerns or directions they want to see the school go. Most of my time, I'm, I'm pretty busy with what we got going on, so I don't do a lot of community engagement. But what you guys, you know, I think teachers would be a huge asset to have a lot of committees.
Okay, I'll give you a little more of the history, just so you know, because Molly was part of this too. We used to have the color school improvement committee. And the school improvement committee would come up with ideas and recommendations and stuff. And then you had your charter board, that was a huge part of this process. And so you had a couple of different committees that recommended the board, but they were board members as well. What's really changed in since we initially got this is you don't have a separate charter board that's bringing recommendations to the board. Because that charter board and a lot of instances work with the school improvement committee. So you had a lot of cross referencing that way.
It was the, the charter board, were they elected? I mean, it was a.
No, they were appointed by the board.
So they were appointed by the board.
Yeah, so what, so if we follow with past practice, we would appoint. If you, if you wanted to appoint a committee, yes. If you want to be part of the committee and have that subcommittee, then that's part. You know, the real issue is I think it's going to take some work sessions that are specifically focused on. How do we implement things that kids want, you know, they want stuff for the future of North Powder? And, and as I start thinking about planning for the future, I'm going, there's some pieces you can do here at board meeting. Like you take you, for example, you take this one topic we're talking about and you take that times five or six topics, that's going to be an error. And so trying to do that in a board meeting, to me is not really realistic, it's not taken. But yes, to, to your question is, it could be a subcommittee that reports back to the board. And then the board takes that information, goes from there. It could be board members working on it with members. Um, but that is a big change that has occurred, what used to be two boards. And this board didn't have authority, but they had the authority to make recommendations to the board. And then the board made the final decisions. Was all consolidated when the state came out and said, if you're the only school in your history, then your school board can act as your charter board. And that's, you know, I included the executive summary from the ground in your packets for you to read at your own time. But it really gets down to us, that was the vision when the charter started. Is that still the vision or is there a different vision for the future? As we do, subcommittee with the board members. It's a. Couldn't have, we have to have less than three of us on, so.
Yeah, but it was at the board meetings. Then some committee would give recommendations.
Then I think we would have, then I, I mean, I think. Then we have like a work session with the board. Subcommittee, I think the subcommittee would be couple of board members. Other people. They would work on it and then.
I think it'd be good to have somebody. If they're willing to, that was part of the original. Board, the charter board, to be a part of it, to kind of have their history with it. And, and their insight on how they collaborated to put this in motion. And then you can maybe give us, help us out a little background, a little history on it. Yeah, yeah, that's all about.
I think that's the thing, like I said, I know, I know Cheryl was part of it originally. Um, I think Margie Lynn was part of it originally. And so there's people like that that you could bring back in, they could, would have a historical how we got here. Uh, one of the things we lost that was a big piece of it was Mr. Jones.
I was going to say is, like.
Um, so he might, he might consult with you. Um, we'll see, we'll see now state tracks, sorry, asking that, so we can have a chance to have a conversation.
But I mean, in all seriousness, people, I mean, his, whether he's on the committee or not.
Yeah, but there are those people around and then I think there's, you know, there are people on staff today. They would have some good insight to have that too. Um, so that's my real fear is if we don't revisit it, pretty soon all the things that made us charter are going to start dissipating disappearing.
Well, I just really think it's fits in very nicely with. The work. Start on this process.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm timely to do that, but I would also say I'd like to get some. More recent graduates too. Well, they could share their, their experiences. Well, they're most closely to their in the world.
Yeah.
Probably felt prepared for it.
I, I think if you're getting a committee, one of the ways you start it is, you know, who, who wants to be on it? And that's kind of how the charter board was appointed. Is you can put it out to staff, put it out to community, put it out to people that were on the original committee. And then you limit to, you know, two people from this group, two people from that group, you can do that group, because obviously if you have three people on committee. It starts to be done in time soon too. I think the original uh school improvement committee had seven or eight of us on. That was the one that only being in Marjorie, myself, I think he was a part of. So that was a committee that reported to the charter board. And then the original charter board was another five members, but they did get input from other big places as well. Um, because I know staff were involved, like I said, Mr. Jones wasn't each part of that. You see the technology that was part of the original grant, if that was all together, you'd realize it would be part of it. But I think it's, I think that is a good process to start with. They're okay, if we're going to create a committee, which two board members would like to be involved in it? And then you put it out to the board, selects from whoever wants to apply, being the members of the subcommittee report.
So, to move this forward. Tonight, what should we do? Should we make a decision about a subcommittee? No more, so I would say, but if we make a decision on creating a subcommittee. And then we say no more than what number of people? I would, if you're going to reach out for three different groups, say community, past members, current staff, limited to six or seven. Probably six if we chose two each of those categories.
Six or seven, I was going to say just no more than like nine.
Yeah.
So you got, and then just sort of start with staff members, parents of community and.
Well, could I? We can, I guess we can be that detail oriented tonight. My thought was, we say let's, or one option. Is to say, look, we're going to create a subcommittee, it's going to be no more than nine people. Let's start making it known generally to folks that, that, that this, we're doing this, just generally to people that are interested and see who. And then we can all reach out to people and say, hey, we're doing this, you know, like Mr. Jones, I'm all, you know, different people, say, hey, we're doing this. See what the feedback is and then we can make a decision at the next meeting about who's going to be on there.
Yeah.
I just formally appoint them. And then. Because these things. These meetings, it's like, okay, that's a good idea. And it's like, how do we advance the, the project each time? Then I would say, let's do a timeline of, okay, by this date, we're going to have a subcommittee appointed.
Cast our movement in some use then.
So maybe somebody who is a diagnosed, uh, put things off procrastinating. These are the type of exercises that you do to make sure you get stuff done. That's a great idea.
So what you really are after is get the information out to staff, community and, and former members. Uh, because staff could, I mean, community could be younger people or those matters community. And then have two board members, no more than nine members from those subgroups plus the two board members.
Yeah, just total was what I thought.
Total with former, so you need, you need another seven people.
Yeah, just kind of let, let, see what interest is out there. Do we need a motion to a?
You will, no, because you will officially do, so this, this is just setting up your process. You will officially make motions when you start appointing members to your committees. And then, then you also have to, you know, make sure that you explain to them what the authority they have is, which really is your subcommittee to come up with recommendations to present for the board.
So what's our, when do you think is a realistic goal, have a, a product?
I would say.
Product here.
I would say completed product or meeting committee.
No, completed product, a year?
Year, nine months to a year.
A year. So if we were back from that, we should probably have a committee appointed formed by.
I would, I would start a school year next. I would hope to within two to three months, only because it is summertime.
Yeah, I would.
It's busy, it's busy, but getting the information out now, saying if you're interested, come to the August board meeting. Um, because that gets people going to be ready to start when school year starts. And uh, it's a good place to start. I just keep going back to having a, a plan. Helps keep things alive that are why we're here. And so I think that is a great start to a plan and get that information out to these subgroups, find out who is interested in being on. If you're interested, if you're excited, you want to present a letter to the board, if you want to show up to a meeting, how you want to do that? Because I know in past years they had to submit a letter and then they were selected from that process. Um, but that's all stuff we've got, a couple of months to talk about. I think this gives us the direction now of, all right, we're going to have a subcommittee, we need to get information out and then people that are interested in plus.
So let us have, uh, we, the August meeting will be when we appoint the subcommittee. Have a committee together, appointed by September board meetings, who we will appoint in August and, and be ready to proceed with.
That gives a couple of months here to get the word out.
Nothing over the summer, people can have their summer and we'll be ready to go when September hits. So we'll have your, so we'll want the names by the August meeting to make the appointments.
Yeah, they can, I mean, literally, if you wanted to send in, you know, send in a letter of interest, they can send those in as soon as possible. Maybe by the time we get to August board meeting, we've got, then you select from that group.
So how do we start? Is it formally spreading that? What's the best way?
We will work, will work on the message that we put out together. Um, but between social media and thrill share and things we have to notify our entire communities, we can get word out pretty good. Yeah, I just not think you want to put together a professional sounding message so that, well, I want to say so you don't get a ton of phone calls, but I want people to understand what it is they're signing up for instead of.
All the format of that letter we got four times, that'll get your attention.
So that's, that's the big decision tonight. We'll go with the committee, we'll get the information out and we'll try to select member by hours.
That'll work. Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Uh, moving on to the, uh, oh, sorry, we're. Can we have a reminder of our summer board meetings? Those are.
We should be doing it anyways, but yeah. We will work on that.
Well, it might be helpful to other people too. You know, sometimes my answers remind me I got a baby. I'm waiting for his text. You know, moving on to the uh approved and certified contract, once ratified by the association.
So that was my original ideal, then I had a conversation with Betsy today and there were a couple of glitches, typos, nothing major, but things that need to be corrected. And so I really think my proposal at this point for both the certified and the classified is let them ratify their contracts. So they're ratifying the full, well, official version. And then once they ratify the contract themselves, then we'll present it to the board, hopefully at the June board meeting for approval. Uh, now if you guys want to share what happened in negotiation with each other, that's up to you. Uh, but I think that's the process. Betsy, you're on there, aren't you still?
Yes, I'm on.
That's, is that still your thought?
Yeah, I think that'd be good. It was just a couple of minor little glitches, errors with um things that we can have Kim fix. And then we'll, we can meet and ratify it on our end. And then I think June would be perfect. If that works for everyone.
Yes. I know the classifieds was the same way, they just had a few, some language left to clean up, some days to change. And they said they would get it ratified and that was.
Yeah, there's, I think between contracts going back and forth, it's really difficult to choose the ones corrected. It's almost air bicing, need different corrections.
Yeah.
So I think once it's all ironed out, this is the version.
Both groups have finished negotiations.
Yeah, both groups have finished negotiations with the PAs on everything they're doing. So it's just a matter of getting that in language, having them clarify it and then come through.
Yeah, classifieds, but, but earlier as well. Okay, do we want to read that letter, Lance? The, you said, put it under.
Oh, under seats, thank you.
New business, I'm sorry.
We still, we still.
Never mind, no, no, I put it in the wrong one, sorry. Okay, we got that through, all right, the, moving on to the new business, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six caliphs.
So in front of you, you have a copy of a calendar for this upcoming school year, and I actually call it the construction version. Uh, really very similar to calendars we've had in the past. The only difference being is because of the window of time when they think they'll finish construction, which is sometime around that eighth or ninth. Um, which if that's the case, then probably elementary students wouldn't start till the fifteenth, because upon completion of construction, they will have to start moving all stuff back in rooms. Unfortunately, with the removal of asbestos, we have to vacate everything out of books, T U Ds, computers, everything. And so that'll, it's all we've worked hard to process, moving some of that stuff into the cafeteria. Because where those double doors are by Kelo's office, where you just get the main entry to go down to the old section of the elementary, those will be shut and then there will be a barrier on the east side of those doors. Um, because there's, if you take time and you go through those double doors, you'll notice those doors have like a six inch wall. And then there's an offset and there's another six inch wall. That second six inch wall's got to be torn out completely. And then they'll put big puddings in and pillars in, all kinds of things to support it, brace it. And rebuild that wall. And so just to the east of that, they'll shut those double doors, they'll seal it off and then they'll keep it dust free on the other side with some kind of coating. So it's, I mean, it's literally, they will be in suits and kind of every entryway with block be draped over double entryways. I've been through it before, the kind of thing when they do the asbestos removal down there. And it's a process during that time, they'll wait, they'll be in that section of the building until they have it elevated, it's got cleaner quality check. And then once they get that, then the contractors can go and start doing their thing. But the contractor will start on the roof above, because the roof's coming off and the roof is on. So while they're working on the abatement, the contractors will still be busy doing something else they can. Uh, but that being said, this proposal starts school the week after Labor Day instead of the week before within service. And then, uh, actually, Mr. Thompson, when I was visiting with him one night, it was the highly awarded bandwidth, he had a great idea. He uh asked me, how many emergency days did we get? And I thought about it originally, I told him, well, we scheduled twenty-three after hours, so that's about three and a half days. But then I went back and started reading some legislation and if you remember right, back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, they were going to take away the fourteen hours of emergency release time in the calendar. That is back in now, so you get fourteen hours of release time from the state, plus we still schedule twenty-three hours additional time. So the total that comes out to about five and a half days of emergency. So the total that comes out to about five and a half days of emergency release time. Unless we have an extremely difficult winter or we have a facility that fights first, we can't be in it for a week or. That should allow us to finish at the same time and not have to go the extra weekend to June. I shaded that extra week in on this calendar, you'll see it's kind of a pinky's color. Just in case we get the snowstorm of the century. And you have to use those days. But it wouldn't matter if we were in a construction project or not, if we had a snowstorm of the century, we'd be rescheduling someday somewhere anyway. Um, and so that's the goal. Still meets our contractual obligation when it comes to the amount of hours kids have to go to school. So it's still put kids in school over nine hundred and ninety plus hours. Elementary only has to have nine hundred hours. Um, biggest, biggest reason for pushing it back is the difference between elementary staff being here for two full weeks before they have kids in the bathroom versus three full weeks. Um, at some point, I think. People are going to get tired when they can't get in their rooms. Um, and that's. And, and Betsy's heard me say this before, that's best case scenario, everything goes right. Which is part of the reason we gave it that extra week. Um, nobody knows for sure till they get the roof off. But if we have the worst case scenario. Then we'll look at alternatives and still start school. We just might be setting up some dividers in the gymnasium or something.
If we happen to use, say, two of those emergency days, then we would have to go.
Two, I think we'd still be safe because that last week is usually about three and a half days. And so, but what it, what it does, it also makes us, I mean, I'm not going to put safety risk, I'll say that now. But it makes you a little bit more conscientious of, is it really four inches out there or is it only two inches? Want to say it's four inches. I mean, I hate saying it that way, but sometimes you look at snow and it gets deeper than this. I don't know how many times I'll tell people we got six inches and I'm going to make three or four and a half. So. But I think, but it's forward has the official authority to approve the calendar. Anything you want to add, Betsy?
I don't think so. I just think as overall, nobody wants to have to go all the way through June. And we all know that those projects have the tendency to have a little glitch here and there. So. I think as a whole, if we hold off a week, but we can still get out at the same time. I think everyone's supportive of that.
And I'm trying to reach out with the data, so if you guys have anything else going on with that.
So we.
You have officially adopted that.
I moved that we approved the calendar.
It's been moved by Drew Martin, seconded by Justin Bingham to approve the school calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to the new scoreboard for shot box for the gym.
So this is one of those things that Mr. Gutten and I got quite a ways down the road on, were ready to kind of pull the trigger on new scoreboards and I landed. It's over ten thousand dollars, it's got to work for. And, and so we have actually collected, and I think I have it in here. We have gotten six thousand nine hundred dollars in donations up to this point. Um, we have over twenty-six thousand dollars in gates. And the Gates Fund is the, that kind of miscellaneous student body fund where all of our own games, tournaments that the funds can not go into. We always roll a big chunk of that back into the district because the district pays for the officials and everything else associated with those games. Then we keep some in there for unexpected things that come up for students and athletics. And so when I talk to Amanda, we'll be transferring, they were intended to fifteen thousand dollars. Into Gates now in order to pay the seven thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars difference. Uh, so it won't be coming out of general fund, it will become out of that Gates fund. And then at the end of the year, we'll decide how much more we transfer. Um, because we usually try to keep three or four thousand dollars in there every year, kind of have that starting fund. Because that's things like, all of a sudden, we're tight on the budget, but we need to do that one. Uh, they go back to kids that way. Biggest reason for the scoreboards is those of you who have coached or been out there, you'll notice that they go off. If you're right in the middle of the game, it shuts off and glitches, you have to play it back in. We've got one controller that semi works. And they're sold out, maybe you can't get parts for those controllers anymore. And so we've opened them up and soldered it back together. I don't have any chance. John was really happy when John was here. And Al's still working on fixing them, keeping them going. But before we lose it completely. We'll put new scoreboards in that are wireless scoreboards. And so you won't have to worry about running wires and plugging in things. You can run it from a wireless scoreboard program. Uh, if we pay the additional money for you to run from your phone, like we do the football scoreboard. And you'll have new shot box to go with it. We have a school district in our region that wants to buy our old shot box. Um, so that'll be a part of the source of the sixty-nine hundred dollars of income. Yeah, we got, we got those at a really good price and everyone wanted to give us a decent price for it too, so that would help cost, cost a good means.
How much did they pay for their old scoreboards?
They won't pay the old scoreboards, but they pay the shot box.
Oh, okay.
They're only like three years old.
Okay. I think DT said he wanted old scoreboards.
I have now.
You've got a lot.
They got to take them when they come down though, because I had one sit in the alley for almost three years. So. But you do have to approve that if we want to move forward towards, you say, new scoreboards for the middle school gym. Because of the amount of bills.
So we just need to approve the purchase of the new shot box?
You, no, new shot box and scoreboards. New shot box, scoreboards, yeah, for the middle school gym, total of fourteen thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars. None of that is general.
I move to proceed with it. New shot box, scoreboards for the old gym. As explained by Mr. Gibson.
I second that. The move from Drew Martin, seconded by Justin Bingham to approve the purchase of the new scoreboards and shot box. In the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Houses unanimously. Oh, you're fine. I like to do, you know, all the details. All right, uh, move on with this letter from, uh, Chris Cohn, sorry. Do you want me to read it or you want to?
I don't care.
If you want to do it.
Uh, just, just give you a quick summary. This deals a lot with our lunch programs with Medicaid. Things that with some of the. Recent recommendations from the federal government would be impacted at state level and with the credit vouchers for private schools. Um, all things that could have negative impacts on public schools. And so this came out from OSBA today. I think you said you got it. Are you already ready? Um, so I'm just going to read it. Says. Oh, I got the wrong one in my hand. Look, it's sorry. I'm going, no, it's right here. I'm just going to the executive summary as a crisp from. Um, says Congressman Benz. We are writing as Eastern Oregon School District leaders who are deeply concerned about some of the polls being discussed in Washington DC. We understand. Budget reconciliation has already passed the House, but we trust you are in a position to have ongoing conversations with your Senate colleagues. As you are our voice in the nation's capital, we want to share some important data about local schools and the potential impact of this legislation on the communities we serve. Nearly half Oregon school districts are in your congressional district. They serve more than ninety-nine thousand students. In many areas, our schools are just not a place where students learn. They are the hearts of our community. We don't need to tell you the pride that residents of the second congressional district take in their children and their local schools. But our ability to serve our students and communities well requires adequate resources. Some federal policy initiatives threaten to take away resources that we intend on providing, the supports our students need. Many of our students and districts have benefited from the community eligibility provision approached at school meals. Where eligibility for free meals is determined at the school building level. This not only ensures that all students in a school have access to adequate nutrition. At the start of their learning day, but also reduces the administrative burden on staff by eliminating some of their work. The latter is of best. Thing for in small districts for our staff members who are multiple house. Under C E D, students are identified and counted towards the school's eligibility when they receive services throughout programs such as SNAP, TAMP and Medicaid. Because of these programs also risk impacting the number of students identified for school meals. Which in turn could reduce our federal reimbursement rates. Currently, district-wide student eligibility rates in congressional district two range from twenty-five percent in Himmler to seventy-four percent in Ontario. Because Medicaid in particular can be disastrous in Oregon. Data from the Oregon Health Authority indicates that just under three hundred thousand congressional district two residents are covered by the Oregon Health Plan. The most enrollees among the six congressional districts. Seventy percent of the children in congressional district two receive. Health coveries through the Oregon Health Plan. Of the school district choice of district level data is available. The percentage of students on Medicaid ranges from thirty-four percent in Bell to eighty-six percent in Mitchell. With the bulk of the districts falling somewhere between fifty and seventy percent. Many of our rural communities are already facing a shortage of healthcare providers. And we know that when there isn't sufficient access to local doctors, rural students miss more school due to the distance of travels families must drive. To access this healthcare. If low-income students lose access to health insurance and their families can't afford to pay out of pocket, they will be less likely to access timely healthcare. If too many community members lack adequate health insurance coverage, it will drive providers who need to make a living out of rural communities. Further exacerbating problems with our local access to local healthcare. Not only will federal cuts in Medicaid create a large hole in Oregon's overall state budget. Which could impact funding available for schools. But schools benefit directly from federal Medicaid reimbursements. School districts can receive Medicaid reimbursements for in-school health services provided to students in order for them to access their education. Examples would be diabetes management, speech language therapy. Uh, nursing for students of the highest need medical needs, et cetera. Getting that special education service for one of the highest cost drivers for school districts. And the federal government has never fully funded the Individual Misabilities Act. Medicaid reimbursements are one way for districts to stretch their dollars as far as they can go. We ask that you please work with the other members of the Oregon delegation and with your Republican colleagues to prevent cuts to nutrition and health programs. That support our districts. We would happily, we would be happy to talk with you and your staff directly about the impact of these programs in any of our local schools. Another issue on which we want to encourage you to have conversations with your colleagues is reauthorizations of the Secure Rural Schools Act. We know that you are a sponsor of the legislation and we'd like to give you some data that will hopefully help support your advocacy efforts. Since the SRS was not reauthorized in two thousand twenty-four, Oregon has lost thirty-eight one seven million dollars in federal funding statewide. That equates the loss of us for schools and congressional district two of roughly six point five million dollars. The impact cannot be overstated. For example, the funding loss in Grant County School District is equivalent of four certified teachers. Please let us know how we can further support your efforts and champion the SRS reauthorization of leadership. We also want to express our concern over the Educational Choice for Children Act. As we understand it, this proposal would earmark billions of career and federal tax credits. For donations to organizations that would issue scholarship vouchers to families for educational purposes. While expressly prohibiting states from having any oversight. This proposal seems to set up a system where loosely modern nonprofits across the country could be issuing vouchers to Oregon families. Earning up to three hundred percent of area median income. It seems the most likely immediate outcome of this proposal proposal is that families who already have their children in private schools will benefit by receiving funds. To cover some, cover some or all of their costs. The likely outcome is that some families will pull their students out of the public school system. As you know, for your time in the Oregon Legislature, declining enrollment would impact local district funding levels. Our school district could face a double whammy because private schools are not required to serve all students the way the public schools are. They can choose which students they accept. In a system in which more families could send their students to private schools, public schools would likely have to continue to serve the highest need population. But with reduced funding for services and overhead. This proposal also seems ripe for abuse and poor outcomes. There are many high-quality private schools in Oregon, however, private schools in general face little regulation. Nearly anyone can decide to open a small school. Our understanding of the legislation is that there would be little to no regulation regarding quality standards for schools being paid through the scholarship vouchers. It seems possible that we could see an influx of low-quality fly-by-night schools. That are not ultimately in the student's best interest. On the one hand, we are hearing that President Donald Trump wants to give responsibility and recite that case by states. On the other, we see proposals like this, which would essentially supersede any state-level decision-making. About voucher, about voucher programs in which would also severely hamstring state accountability and oversight. Please protect states' abilities to turn for themselves, whether they want to include voucher programs in their educational landscape. And to do so with the appropriate oversight to ensure student protections and internal educational standards. There is nothing wrong with private schools or homeschooling, but access to public education is the cornerstone of American experience. We believe that the ECCA, as drafted, will negatively impact our public school system. Thank you for your time to review our concerns. We appreciate all that you and your staff do for the residents of congressional district two. And we want to be a resource for you and your team. We have included less than school districts and the congressional district for which the C E B and Medicaid enrollment data were available. Please let us know if you have any questions or would like to discuss any of these matters. Sincerely and sincerely in the case of the congressional district.
This letter is saying. We oppose. Plans on Medicaid. How's that?
What it's, what it's really doing is saying, we want, we want Senator Benz to advocate on our behalf when it comes to Medicaid. The C N P program. The voucher program. And so things that we don't want to see taken out of the state's control. Or in Medicaid space, the state is responsible for, right? It will cost additional funding. So that's what you're really up against is just that ideal of. In order to protect schools and provide the things we provide over the day. We want to advocate that Senator Benz advocates for these things. With his colleagues.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I just want me to try to clear out something what they're. Saying, so in that show, let's. Repose to your plans for Medicaid under current legislation. That's what this is saying, right?
Medicaid and the C N P program, which is how we give our students a free reduced lunch program. As far as that's very started with.
Says here, when you receive the services, so if they're going to affect Medicaid, SNAP.
And our C E B.
T A N F. Those students, those programs help with. Accounting towards our students eligibility to get the free and reduced lunch programs.
Yeah. But what are they planning on doing to the C E B? That wasn't clear. They said that is taken out under the current.
Maybe it would disappear because your account for that would go down dramatically when you no longer can use those other programs. In order to qualify kids eligible for them. And so that's because, for example, the, and Betsy probably goes much up, it's like SNAP programs up. That's the meals that they provide for students during the summer. Um, some students' parents have gotten the, um, three hundred dollars, whatever, I feel they're wrestling. Uh, for their kids when they're out of school. But the reality of it is, when it comes to those kind of things, that is part of the poverty, how they calculate poverty. For school districts, that's why you have a name of twenty-five to seventy-four percent. When they start making changes to that, it takes away your ability to calculate that. It's going to change your ability to provide for the free lunches. It's going to change your ability to have medical care. It's going to change your ability to comfort your kids. And so that's what they're really after is that support for him advocating to basically leave things the way they are, not any polishing process.
So the issue that I have is making assumptions that I don't know. I don't know the answers to it because this is making assumptions about what the current. Legislation, pending legislation, those continuing resolution. That. I don't know. What reality is about what that will actually does. To these programs, but what I. What read this is a letter to our. Congressman saying oppose. Oppose these things, which is a. Political. Stance that I just, I don't know if the answer is to it. And so I've got reservations about approving this. Not because I necessarily disagree with. Some of these objectives, but it's. It's saying, send a letter to Representative Benz. To oppose. School vouchers, which I don't need that relative to our, we don't have to signify the school.
No, but if they got the school vouchers, it can only be private schools. That's the, that can get you a ticket too, but we're in a charter school region. But when it comes down to. Is I can choose to give my voucher credits to Baker. It's not going to have the same impact, you're right, because, because of the fact that we pretty well have parent choice in our region. You know, we have kids going here to Baker, Grand Ole, we have kids back in the grand over here. And so that won't put in your major metropolitan urban areas if they definitely have it. Uh, I even think it's a part of this and it's, it's just making some assumption like you say. But if private schools can use those vouchers, then. All O S A rolls it off the windows too, because now I can recruit based on the vouchers and I pick the. Kids I want. So, uh, I can tell you this, which might conflict your decision. The super in attendance in the region. Agreed to a letter similar to this, it was sent a long time ago. Um, they're reaching out for more, I think, support. But I'm not going to make a political statement for the school. I just agree them to have to port a regional super kid stance.
Well, that's kind of my concern with it is because we're, we are elected members of. District. It's just, it's a very political thing. It's just a very political thing. I'm not sure as a representative. Elected representative of folks really don't have an opinion one way or the other on what's actually going to happen in this. Elected representative of both really don't have an opinion or their other on what's actually going to happen in this bill in terms of actions that we take. As board members, I have some concern about taking using our position to take a political stance like this. Political not way. So and I, I guess I'm just trying to understand a little more of what I guess when I read this or read this, I understand they're encouraging, this letter encourages uh Senator Vance to to do this thing to, to uh push for no cuts to Medicaid or limited cuts to Medicaid. Is that, is that what this letter is saying? Know exactly what those cuts are going to be, but I think this letter is saying, if there are cuts to Medicaid, then this is what could happen. What could, and we're probably don't, we don't know any of those, uh, for sure what will happen. But we, they're saying, this letter is saying, if there's cuts to Medicaid, it's going to have some, it could have some very significant impacts uh to our students, especially those in this, in our rural SD two, CD two. I guess that's what I'm hearing. That's what I'm understanding from this letter.
What it comes down to.
It is our responsibility.
One is not, not the access reductions. That's, that's, you're right. That's the first one. And then I think the second one is not too loud. The vouchers that give very little control. If let parents can choose to take their good, they want to take. The dynamic with the vouchers being it's not state school funding that follows them now. But it could cause an impact on state school funding being taken away from some schools because as your enrollment shrinks, so does your state school funding because it's based on your A D M. And so if we got, you know, and obviously use an example, if we had forty kids that took their vouchers in a program, we lose state school funding for forty students, which would be a huge impact on work. And so that's what they're, you know, when I read it, what I read is we're asking you to advocate for keeping school funding strong, keeping these programs strong in the benefit of, especially in our most needing districts.
Okay, maybe you don't like that. It's just not, we don't know enough about what I propose legislation is, that really is, or how is we're going to take Medicaid. And a couple of things. Yes. The biggest thing is whenever it's a political season. Here is, is, it's used by either side or, or against it. And I don't know if the plans, what they're talking about in this, in this bill. This continuing resolution, whatever it is that they're working on is as consequential as what this letter is. It's suggesting, because what, what I believe this letter really is saying, we oppose what's correct. And what I'm saying is at a personal level, I don't know. I hear arguments on both sides. You know, more against it. And maybe that's just the, you know, the indictment on me about not being educated enough, but I'm just. It, it's just a little bit political.
And I think the key there, Mr. Martin, is right. It's proposals that are not realistic yet. And what they're trying to do is implement a stance to help support and maybe. For the benefit of students. There is, there is a huge fear and we're going to talk about that later too when I get anything right for it. Um, there's so many I know with federal funding.
Um, they talk, talk about that here too. They want us to advocate for the support to have him revisit his uh what was it? The S R, the Secure Rural Schools Act. So, uh, I mean, it's, there's, there's at least three, three, you know, things kind of rolled into one here, but there one to touch on.
Because you said the secure, secure schools and you have the smaller schools, we said the smaller schools, but even for a small district, it has.
And the other thing I have to miss is knowing that that's personally is you know. Those things that's going to take all this into no concern. But Vance working out of the schools, like I, you will be. And what is happening with this letter, this letter is going out regards. Nothing new. But they just want to say, look, we've got every school in this district that says support, but here's our look at anyways. I don't, it's.
I'm okay with being aware of this. I think it's good information to have. Cause like you said, you've lost them. Rabbit trails of politics and no time left. I, I agree with, with Drew and, and I agree with your points too. The superintendents, I think that's good to have that momentum going forward. I think though, as a, a board support, I think it's something we should probably just stay in control of right now and just keep an eye on it. I like having the information. But I don't know if we want to attach the board itself to supporting it.
Well, ironically, this.
I'm really just trying to talk to people. This is, I'm, I'm not trying to be persuasive. I'm just, if more details came out and there was more of a concrete direction on what they were solely focusing on that we know is going to have an impact, that would be different. But there's three major things that are kind of getting asked.
So I, I think here's going to be my recommendation, to be quite honest. There is a superintendent's meeting tomorrow with all the different candidates getting together. I'll be able to talk to my whole year. I think having Martin give you some input on his perception on this, because he's been drafted by the superintendents. He can probably clarify because he's also on a governor's panel. He can probably clarify a lot more of this in the way it came out of the letter. This letter came the same day we happened to have had a board meeting. And so I was trying to get on the, because Bill will have another board meeting for a while. But you can always revisit it now, special board meetings, decide and change your mind or something, want to do with it. But I know Martin can give a lot more insight into what they're asking than what's.
Maybe that's the better way for me to put it. I don't feel like I know enough. Yeah, yeah. I, I just don't like signing off on things that are as political stance that we.
I think it'd be good to have a full board and, and that, and that from Martin, Martin's. We all, we all know what we need.
I think, um, tell us. I appreciate what you said about not allowing fear to govern uh decisions that we made generally. I, I great, uh, that I, I, I am, I do have a fear though that there are that's, and I'm not educated well enough to say exactly what. But I think as a board, we have to know we can advocate for our students. Uh, and, and that means that that's a huge part of that is funding. So I am concerned that there's really less funding based on the way that the federal government is tackling at this point. Probably putting our names at the bottom of this letter isn't making a difference. Hopefully could, that understands these issues. I'm sure he does. I'm sure he's way better than me. And I, I don't think we need to make any decision. I can get on the board, discuss this, but I guess just in, in where I'm at is that is a, it is our responsibility, even if it's some political to advocate for funding our students. I agree with you. So, so that's, but I'm, I think, uh, making notices about that. Yeah, no, I, I agree with what you're saying. I I think what Lance is saying is a really good point, but what I, you know, my, I want to know and if if we need to advocate, I would rather write our own letter that addresses specific and generalized things that are, that are not. It are, we're, I don't know, but you know.
Right. Hear what they did when they.
Well, I, I am not opposed to sending a letter and talk to Mark and give some more information and getting involved. I just didn't come like signing cash letters. And you're probably, that letter, this is a letter from our school boards, but I'm going to have more than a hundred. So that's a good district bottom.
And this will be on the agenda tomorrow. Anyway, this has been ongoing discussion for three weeks at different levels.
Yeah, it's related. So you're learning more and getting more input from Mark and people, uh, maybe his discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's great. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you in this room. All right. Super good report.
So um, summer school grant, Commander Kai touched on already, we got thirty-eight thousand dollars. And so we have uh Mr. Tinker, Mrs. Dixon, Ashley Stevens, Antonio Benitez, uh Jen Warner, counselor, that will all be involved in summer school. We're also looking in that potentially adding some P E to that. No matter what we've done, it's going to be like I talked to him a couple of times and he's not sure really. And then in the past, Jesse has had this hard, so we do have some projects just seem available this year. We got their exchange work actually involved in. And we will provide transportation for all of our summer school students that live outside town, um, as well as providing the meals. And so it'd be a pretty robust summer school focusing on early literacy and mathematics because they're doing the early literacy part in both of those areas. With events that will accumulate at the end of each week towards what they're studying. Um, they'll be spending five and a half hours a day for weeks. Writing the summer school program because you have to have a total of eighty hours in order to get funding. Um, but it is nice. We use the budgeting work from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year for summer school. This year and last year has been provided for us. So, uh, we were on the list of schools that were pre-approved if you wanted the monies, but you have to run a big grant process. So the people that were going to be involved and volunteer, we sit down, they threw up the revenue and set it off. And they have to go on a group government. Now we get a similar updated budget. I T grant, the I T grant is the grant that Amanda was talking about earlier. It's got the SIA, the High School Success, the Early Intervention Systems, which is a lot to do with senior stuff and working and all that. Over a two-year period, it is one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. And last week we got the notification from the state that our plan has been approved. There was only thirty-seven plans at that time that were approved in the state of Oregon.
Nice.
Um, so great work. The uh June economic forecast, one of you probably has the one I wrote on. Yes, I, is that it?
Yep.
So what is, what is the shortcut there?
The shortcut is seven hundred and ninety-eight million dollars.
That's how much the June forecast was down from the state of Oregon from the March forecast. That's why there's concern about whether they'll keep the eleven point three million dollar, billion dollars for school funding or whether we reduce somewhat. I'm not an expert on some of these areas when it comes to the rainy day fund and kickbacks, kickers for individuals, et cetera. Um, I just know it's not as bright as they thought it was going to be back in March when they wrote, you know, the eleven point three. Between COSA and OSBA, they are working very, very very hard to keep that number hold. So the board, especially with all the other unknowns that are out there. We need some stability somewhere. And so they're advocating in order for some of those things. I think that's why some of these other things come up is there's just so much unknown that that shortfall of revenue could have made your impacts. I think before next year, because I will honestly say, and that's why I asked Amanda again. All you're thinking we're hearing is your federal funding pretty much is secured for this year on council type, of course, et cetera. It'll be the following year changed or made now that it'll start happening. So, um, but just so you're aware, that is out there. We're building the budget the best we can and what we know. Problem is what we know is moving hard. House Bill twenty-two fifty-one, I know some of you heard about this, but this was the legislative bill that was going to ban cell phones in all schools in the state of Oregon from Bell Bell, which high school started the high school ended, no cell phones period. That actually died, did not come out for the, the war or any final approval. Um, so it's still up to local school districts. One of the reasons I think it died is because there are local school districts and we're one that's seen that rules when it comes to cell phones. Uh, but there are local school districts controlling it. Two, it's a mandate without funding. And so when you have these schools, they're buying these magnetic bags with magnetic locks and that's coming out of their general fund. If you mandate this for all schools, yeah, that's something that they've got a fund that you're not even going to finish the financial funding for at this time. There was an executive order to cut the Department of Education, which we heard about since the election. Um, that's been blocked by a federal judge. As soon as it was blocked by the federal judge, it was appealed by the federal government. And so wait and see what the final outcome of that is. It, it, in the language, they even talked about reading stadium employees, but I'm sure it's going to be an ongoing issue. Baker North South Powder softball. Has anybody heard of it? They lost. Baker North Powder softball made it to the state playoffs and played St. Helen's Day. Um.
You were number one for St. Helen's.
Yeah, yeah. We, we want to play in game two to one against Brook County. And so as the number sixteen team, they had to go play the number one team. Uh, but it's a good experience for them. They're a fairly young team and they had a pretty good test this year. I actually kind of missed softball, so I went over and watched their game against Brook County. And it, it was, well, it was a net to net game and there was one home run that scored two runs. And they let, and they let Brook County score. And it was the top of the seventh and we were waiting to see if they're going to tie it up and they held on and shut them down. So they ended up winning three to one. Um, state track, as you well know, several students going, um, besides guys, you bet she's going in. Hannah's going what?
Uh, she's going for the four by one hundred, long jump, two hundred and three hundred hurdles.
And we have our four by one hundred relay team going, our four by four relay team going. Um, so there's, and we have a young man going in the hurdles as well. He's going in the hurdles for the one, one three hundred. I think he made a wild, I think he made a wild card three hundred. Um, and so, you know, again, you're back to, there's not a kid participating on that track team that's going to make it down to state this year. That's a senior. And so their outlooks are future is good. Uh, plus they have some other athletes that are really close. And so there may be more numbers going next year. But it's the most that I know. I mean, I, I know in Reese's class, they ended up, that was with Reese State. They took second at state, but there was only four boys that they sat in place and everything. And so we've grown quite dramatically from the days of working at the state where they're day. And I think it'll increase again next year. Again, it's your word. I'm not going to spend talk about that one because she got to go on it today. And spend time with all of our kids that got rewarded attendance and going to top goal.
Yeah, it was fun. So thank you. We took two kids. Any kid that had eight or fewer absences from each class did a drawing. Got permission and then we had a couple of kids that had perfect attendance and took a bus over to Top Golf, Golf for a couple of hours, had lunch there. Stop for ice cream on the way back and a fun day.
You guys took the battery bus too, right?
Yeah, so awesome.
And Baker pulled up in their yellow bus where their senior skipped there.
I know where North Power is in town, baby. I love it.
Yeah, yeah.
How many seats?
We took twenty. It was fun.
That's why I had a whole bus like six kids like weird. That's, that's a good incentive.
Took two staff members besides myself and then we took two parents.
I, I think last year they did that trip and I had a kid at the element. I sleep this a great. So, um, but it is nice reward the kids. There are small rewards they get and there's a big reward at the end of the semester. And it does help with some of those students. So, uh, Rose is this month and it's, this is an interesting one, but they go to Amy Van Ice, Kim Youngson, Amanda Law. You guys may not know it, but barbing with you as a board is one of nine schools they do. Um, when they finished with classified barbing here the other day, it was late enough. I was like, I'm not going home to cook. So we went to a restaurant and they're setting up at the restaurant at eight thirty, ninety and people go out. And talking about how night before they didn't go until eleven o'clock and tomorrow night, we'll be in the school district and probably get out there for ten o'clock. So it's amazing what they do before they run out of schools and have a properly put in this time of year. Um, so I thank them a lot for that.
I don't know if they told you guys, if they told us the classic size that we are their favorite board to work. And she said, we are just, she, the staff out, the admin, everybody, she says, North Batter is just they absolutely love coming here and they really appreciate, appreciate us. So I thought that was a nice compliment.
Was that, was that you and Dan?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Lance.
Uh, okay, Molly, press.
Sixth graders had outdoors school last week and looked such a great time. Uh, we had our activity banquet for high school a few weeks ago. I'm looking at changing a few things um, to make it more of a celebration. It was kind of chaotic with kids running and so just trying to make it. Um, so it's really honoring the kids and not. Um, we.
Keeping my five-year-old out of the gym will probably help.
Well, see, we talked about like the gym, it's just a We talked about like the jam is just a play site. And so families seem to have a hard time like now we're here for something formal. So we need to make it more formal because we really do want to honor the kids and not have my staff and be admin all stressed out because it's chaotic.
One of the things we, we discussed a little bit is maybe doing the awards first and then doing the dinner. Because by the time you do a dinner and they run around for forty-five minutes before you start the award, that's kind of hard to read.
And, and maybe doing them in the yeah, multi-purpose room and having them. So that's my idea. District track was long and fun and it's been a while since I've been to a whole track meet. So that was good there. Our last day of school is a week from tomorrow. It's half day. We're doing our annual color run and the Baker County Coalition sponsoring gourmet corn dogs. So we'll have the weedy with the corn dog thing and apparently they're gourmet. I'm not a corn dog eater, but if you want to come have gourmet corn dog, come on over. We've finished up our testing and I think just having I X L, the state testing, all of our results. I think it's really great to see where our strengths are and where we can improve upon. And so at our next meeting, I'll share those results with you. I, I really like that we have I X L K twelve because we can, we can really see some good things that are going well and things that don't. We received a farmer's school grant and we have six on the team. Five of us are going to a training in June to make a year-long plan. So I think that will be exciting. Lance made reference to the American exchange program. So our kids are going at different weeks this summer. And again, that's the seniors get a free to them trip to a place in the United States and then we're hosting kids. We're hosting July ninth to the sixteenth. Jesse has a great agenda organized. One thing that we're really trying to get is enough funding to do a jet boat tour. To put a little bit of the budget, but we're hoping for a few donations. And.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be like taking kids, like our kids probably have money. So I'm hoping the guy's giving us a discount, but it's, it's still half day. I think it's two thousand for all the kids. I think we have sixteen kids and a couple of children, so.
So for sixteen kids and two adults, it's two thousand dollars?
I think that's what I read. I'll check everything and shoot a message. And we're starting, we are working on our scheduling. So even with changes trying to put those schedules together. Hopefully we'll get everyone hired.
Thank you. Really appreciate you. Okay, moving on to announcements, we have a thank you card for the board. Dear school board members, thank you for the meal breakfast last week and your dedication to making our school great for the kids and a good place for us to work, floor pointer. Very nice. Make sure Daniel gets that as well because we should never let it continue. It was, it was a lot of hard work. But I, I appreciate that.
And I will be getting your plaque for your social board.
Okay, good, good. Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you guys for everything. And then nobody has anything else? All right. It is eight twenty-seven. We're all adjourned. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.